Mayor Protem, do you have some announcements?
I do. Thank you. Well, Mark Woodfill has -- we've put a slide up on that I want to talk about because last session, our study session, Michael Parker talked about a birthday present with our airport terminal. Today, I want to talk about a Christmas present to the city of Prescott. A year and a half ago, the citizens of Prescott passed Proposition 443. It doesn't -- hardly possible, it's been that long. But the results of what we have done, our city has done, we're going to share with you today. In fiscal year '17, our unfunded liability was at $86 million. We were 30% funded in our PSPRS pension system. It was -- I constantly talk about the dark cloud over the city. And so, we really put together a project that the city council at that time put an initiative on the ballot. We educated our public and they passed it. And today, we are just thrilled to report that our unfunded liability is down to $69 million. Quite an accomplishment for a city our size. And I think we've really shown the way for other cities and what can be done. The funding ratio -- let's go back, Mark, just want to be, if you don't mind. The funding ratio from the 30% funded is now 46% funded, and very soon, we will be at 50% funded. Had we not -- I think this is really telling. Now, let's go to the next slide, if you don't mind, Mark. Had we not passed 443 and started funding and taking care of this issue, that red line that was going up, but all of a sudden took a dip down, today, we'd be sitting at $103 million unfunded liability. We're not there today. We're not there today because of the citizens and the city of Prescott passed this, we took care of this issue, and we're going to continue to do this. So, again, once again, our commitment from this council is that we're going to do everything we can to pay this unfunded liability debt down and remove that three-quarters of a cent tax as soon as we can. So, know that we're doing everything we're possible. We also paid the acquired -- the ARC, the -- I'm sorry. Required contribution, annual required contribution, thank you. We paid that out of our general fund, and there was always the threat that we might not do that. Well, we absolutely do that, and we're going to continue to do that as long as possible. So, I just want to say Merry Christmas to Prescott, and thank you for what you did. And I've asked Steve to make a comment.
Yeah, I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody. And also, that what 443 did for us was gave us options as a city. One of the options we had was to put up to $3.5 million into a new terminal and infrastructure around the terminal that we wouldn't have today if we had not passed 443. So, the airline situation in Prescott is awesome. A lot of people have taken it, but we wouldn't be there if we hadn't have passed 443. So, congratulations, Prescott, and once again, Merry Christmas.
Thank you both. That's great news, and thank you both for your leadership on Proposition 443.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, we're going to have an invocation by Pastor Raj from Calvary Chapel, and then pledge led by Councilwoman Scholl.
Citizens love to hear "remove tax," by the way. Those are good words. Good words. Just before I lead in a prayer, I want to read some very wise words from a man known as the wisest man in all of history. And this is simply this from King Solomon. Whatever your hand finds to do, do it with all your might. God in heaven, we come to you today joy-filled, so thankful for what you have done in this beautiful city and what you desire to continue to do. This is a council of leaders that we believe you have ordained, and pray for every single one of them standing here today. As Lord, they are called to such an awesome responsibility. We pray that you would give them things like discernment, give them things like hope. Lord, allow them to execute justice. We pray for things as well, like charity and passion to rule their hearts, that you would allow them to speak with reverence and goodness. Pray that you would give them strength to persevere in this awesome call. Lord, we pray for strength and endurance, that they would be good stewards, as it is obvious they have been. Good stewards of their authority and of all that you call them to lead us in. Also pray just for their character, their conviction, Lord, their ability to stand for what they truly believe in, and God for constituency that supports them. Pray, God, that you would give them great wisdom as they move forward. They indeed are being used to bless us all. And so, we pray for your hand of blessing now upon this meeting, in this day. We pray that in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to presentations.
The first one is Fire Employee of the Year, Fire Engineer Matthew Reese.
Come on up, Matt. Welcome, everybody. It's a great honor to be here with Matt Reese today as he's recognized the Fire Employee of the Year for 2018. Matt was nominated by his peers to be this year's recipient and selected by Chief Light. And I guess you're joined by your wife, Katie's here, and are your daughters here as well?
Sophia and Serena.
Perfect. Hi. Sophia and Serena? Nice. Did you guys get out of school early? Yes. That's all that really matters, right?
Yeah.
That's good. Well, you know, what an honor for me to be able to bring this award to you today, Matt. And, you know, we have a tremendous fire department. I think it's -- I'm biased, but I think it's the best in the state, probably the nation. And for you to be here as the firefighter of the year from that department is a huge honor, I believe, and speaks a lot about yourself. Matt distinguished himself among his peers as a leader within the department. He was the lead program manager for the department's response for mass casualty response, for which he's amassed great grant funding for training as well as medical and safety equipment. This has impacted how firefighters work hand-in-hand with our law enforcement officers should a need arise that involves an active shooter. As a volunteer for Fire Ops 101, a program designed towards educating elected and civic leaders, Matt shared his expertise for the past few years and ultimately has added ambassadors for the fire department to share its role in our community. He's also heavily involved with managing the fire hose needs and testing for the department as well as having served as one of the leads when the department migrated to its new computer-aided dispatch system. Matt, like so many of our city employees, goes well beyond his job description. He has a great personality and a willingness to serve. So, I'd like to congratulate Matt as being Fire Employee of the Year for 2018. You're here. All right, Matt. I don't think I need the mic. It's called that command presence in your voice every once in a while. Matt is also a former military member, served in the U.S. Marine Corps as well. So, as a fellow veteran, I greatly appreciate your service to country as well. Thank you, Matt.
The next presentation is 25 Years of Volunteerism at Community Development.
Good afternoon, everybody. Bren Stotler, Director of Community Development. You know, the city of Prescott is blessed with such a rich culture of volunteerism. I happen to know that from experience. Before I became an employee, I volunteered on two boards and a committee. And during that time, I would just note that there wasn't one meeting that our council liaison, Councilman Lamerson, did not come around and shake every person's hand on the Board of Adjustment or the UDC and thank us for our volunteer service. So, with that in mind, we'd like to invite a dear lady, Joan Stenstrom, to come forward. George, would you help just walk her up? Joan, thank you for being here. Joan has been a volunteer in the Community Development Department for over 25 years.
Wow.
And she has not only brought her special talents to her volunteer role, but she's just been a shining light for the employees of our department. George has been here about 17 of those 25 years.
About that.
So, we're going to invite him to say a couple of words as well.
I'm going to swap spots with you. So, when I first came to work here, Joan already knew everything that was going on in our department, and we learned a lot from each other. She has been a regular, helpful person. And it's not one of those situations where a volunteer comes in and just shows up for a little while and does something. Joan makes a difference in what she does for us and has consistently made a difference through all those years with the work that she's done for us, and it's all been a volunteer job. And we really, really appreciate it.
Would you like to read the plaque?
No.
George? No, you wouldn't. Okay. We'll switch again then. So, we would like to present this plaque to Joan in recognition -- and this is what it says -- in recognition of 25-plus years of exceptional volunteerism in the city of Prescott Community Development Department. Thank you so very much. Joan has brought a few of her friends with her for this celebration today, and with that, we're going to excuse them to head over to Community Development for some cake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bren. That sounds like more fun over there, but we'll let you guys all exit here before we --
Maybe they put a slide up. He's a good guy.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, we will go ahead and proceed here as everybody's finishing an exit. Consent agenda, item seven. You have something that's coming off, Maureen?
Yes, item 7C is being pulled from the agenda.
So, C is being pulled, okay. And is there anything else the council members might want to pull from consent?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item F for comment.
Item F, okay. Anything else? No? Then we'll entertain a motion minus items C and F.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, D, E, and G.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Councilman Blair?
Passes 7-0.
All right. So, then, let's go to item F. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've received some comments regarding this issue of retaining special legal counsel and to join a number of other cities in Arizona on the concern about the impact of Proposition Constitutionally, retroactive laws are generally not allowed, except for tax measures. So, this potentially can impact our ability to continue to collect 443 taxes, which have made such a dramatic impact on our fiscal stability here in the city. I opposed this issue publicly during the ballot because I have a fundamental problem with constitutional issues in the state of Arizona. Our constitution has been amended 156 times, and those amendments have never been repealed. So, no matter what the intention and hopes are for a lot of these constitutional issues, there's always unintended consequences. And that's what we have here. Tax policy, I believe, should be enacted legislatively so when unintended consequences occur, they can be fixed. Well, the ability to fix a constitutional amendment clearly doesn't exist in our state, and we need to have really specialized legal support in making sure this doesn't impact the city negatively the way it possibly can. That constitutional amendment had vaguely worded descriptions of what services are. They weren't really defined, and potentially, they can impact almost any tax issue that we have passed or we will contemplate. So, I would like to say that we need a specialist. You don't have an average local tort attorney standing in front of the Supreme Court arguing briefs on constitutional issues. And I think we're going to need specialists here in the state to address this issue in front of our state Supreme Court. And because of that, I think this is a legitimate expenditure of money to join some of these other cities and make sure that the outcome of this question is as positive for the city as possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Well-stated, Councilman Good. I would like to clarify, though. We got a call yesterday. The mayor and I were on the radio with Michael, and we were talking about 2018 and 2019 to come. And one person called in, he said, "So, is it the intention of the city council to try to overturn Proposition 126?" And we clarified, absolutely not. We simply want to find out what is the service. Let's make sure that this, like you said, Councilman Good, that this does not hurt what our voters decided a year ago, a year and a half ago. And so, I just want to make that clear. We're not -- that's not our intention. Want to clarify, make sure that it's fair, that it doesn't overturn what our citizens voted for, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, good comments. Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I do have one speaker card.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And this is from Liz Kennedy, and she wanted me to read this. "Is a city considering taxes services? If not, why waste taxpayer dollars on legal fees? If so, why would the city tax services when the vote that the citizens are overwhelmingly opposed to this?"
Okay.
Mayor, if it's okay, I could kind of go briefly through this, kind of with a thinking -- yeah, I'll be brief. So, what Prop 126 includes is not just sales taxes. It's any -- shall not impose or increase any sales tax, transaction privilege tax, luxury tax, excise tax, use tax, or any other transaction-based tax fee stamp requirement or assessment. So, it's very broadly written in that regard. On the gross receipts of sales or gross income derived from any service performed in the state. And that's where -- so, it's very broad in its -- what it covers, and it's very narrow in terms of doesn't go in defined service. It also, there was a question, it does affect 443 because, or at least potentially, and this is where we need clarification, because it nullifies any tax or fee or any other assessment in effect after January 1 or January 1, 2018. And remember, even though 443 was passed in August of 2017 and codified by the council in October 2017, it went into effect January 1, 2018. So, there's a huge potential that, under the language, that 443 is affected. Some analysis at other cities and that we've done, it's anywhere, it could affect anywhere from 20, 25 to 30% of what's currently collected. And let me just give a real brief. So, and if you read the ballot language, it also included things, you know, like tax on amusements. Well, Prescott taxes on these things that could be construed to be services, advertising, amusements, contracting, job printing, publication, hotels, hotel motel, rental occupancy, residential rental, commercial rental, rental leasing and licensing. You know, we have our current tax, 2.75% on those plus hotel tax. The hotel tax would be protected by it because it was in effect. Restaurants and bars, transport, utilities. So, if you look at those in a sort of worst-case scenario, and we don't know really because the language is so broad, are those considered services? When you, you know, the restaurant business is called the service industry. Contracting is a substantial part, is labor and service. So, that's the concern that we have here and other cities have, and frankly, so does the state. And I sent you all an article that was in Arizona Republic that talked about this, other cities' concerns. Even the proponents don't like that interpretation. So, there's a substantial potential that this kind of could get resolved amongst the state, the attorney general, the cities, and the proponents of 126, you know, sort of as a settlement without extensive litigation. But I think we all want, I even think the proponents of 126 want clarification and clarity as to, you know, what this means and what's included. And, you know, you read in that article, it was never their intent to get rid of taxes or to nullify taxes that weren't, that were in effect on Election Day in November. So, that's what we're looking to do, you know, and the big picture. And if we can resolve that with regard to 443, that's all we're really concerned about. Going forward, you know, 443 and our street tax do have sunset clauses. So, hopefully, we'll never have to do another 443 tax. But, you know, if the voters decide, or 20-something years from now, that they want to renew a street tax, there could be some impact on that as well. So, it's an important issue. Councilman Good is right. This is, and this is, a number of cities collectively retaining one law firm to do this. It's very cost-effective, very cost-efficient in a cost-sharing way. And so, that's why we're recommending that the council approve this resolution.
Thank you, Joan. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 7F.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. Let's move on to liquor license agenda.
Item A, public hearing and consideration for an application for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license from Tamara Lynn Harker, applicant for Brown Bag Burger located at 150 East Sheldon Street, number 111. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The application fee has been paid, and it's, the sign has been posted at the site for 20 days. No comments have been received.
Yeah, you can just --
Right to the mic right there?
Mark, can you help with the mic there, please?
Oh, thank you.
There you go. Sorry, we're making it hard on you.
I'm new at this.
Yeah, you're fine.
Well, we would love to serve beer and wine, a couple on tap, a couple in bottles. And I'm working on a Shirley Templetini that would be a sort of a house cocktail that we would sell. And that's about it.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for being here. Thanks for your business in our city, and you make a great burger.
Thank you.
So, yes. You know, burgers that you make, they're awesome.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and second.
License application number 34577 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Brown Bag Burger located at 150 East Sheldon Street, number 111.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you, Tamara. All right, let's move on to regular agenda, item 9A, please.
Approval of the 2019 legislative agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's that time of year again already, if you can't believe it. The legislative session starts January 14th, just under a month away from now. And as usual, we want to talk briefly about our legislative agenda. If you didn't notice, I cut it down more than 50% from years past for your benefit. We want to keep it pretty general. As you know, these things ebb and flow as the session changes, so we keep it pretty high level. The guiding principles, we only have two. Those reflect the Leagues as well. Number one, to oppose preemption of local authority. And number two, to preserve local funding. And that really dives into the state's shared revenues, to oppose anything that would harm those and to support anything that would replenish those or help those. More specifically, you can see on page two of your agenda, the League of Cities is talking a lot right now about the South Dakota v. Wayfair case, which has a lot of good benefits for the state of Arizona and across the nation, for that matter. Their proposal is that the Arizona Department of Revenue could change the nexus definition for online retail or remote sellers to include economic nexus rather than a physical presence nexus. And South Dakota, for example, uses $100,000 worth of sales or 200 transactions to create that economic nexus, that then they would start remitting TPT, Transaction Privilege Tax, here. They have some statistics from the League. They say that 19 of the top 20 online sellers are already remitting that tax, and the top 83 out of 100 online sellers are remitting. So, we probably wouldn't see a huge increase in revenues, but as those rules change, we'll see a bump for sure, and it'll help, and it'll make things fair across the board. And then, number two there, just as we discussed, to support the clarification of the definition of services from Prop 126. That'll be another thing. And then, more into the specifics, we've been seeking funding for the hotshots who are in PSPRS or added posthumously for years. As you know, last year, we did receive $1 million out of the eight that we were requesting. And so, we, the plan is to go back this year and ask for the remaining $7 million, which ideally will cover what is currently unfunded from that liability, that unfunded liability. And also, to seek budget appropriation where possible to assist in the construction of the airport terminal, if we can get that. We're going to be seeking that as well. And impact fees. As you know, we worked really hard in the summer. Councilman Good was on the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee for the League, talked for a long time about a resolution, which was passed by the committee at the League Conference in August. The League has since spoken with the Home Builders Association, which is the largest stakeholder that, I guess, is on the opposite side of this issue. They said they don't have any interest in discussing it this legislative session, but that they are willing to talk about it after the 2019 session ends. The League, obviously, we can't move forward without a lot of collaboration from the stakeholders, so they said, "Okay, then we'll use this time to educate the newly-elected legislators as well as those who have been in office to update them on the issues, on our concerns, and get ready for those stakeholder discussions, hopefully starting in May as soon as the session ends." So, we're going to keep an eye on that, and we'll hopefully have a role going forward to put the pedal to the metal, I guess you could say, to get that going. And then, I spoke finally with Barry Aaron's, his office. They called last week and said they were approached by Senator Brophy McGee and others who have a great interest in passing a statewide driving while distracted ban, a statewide law that would apply to that. They think there's finally enough momentum and support to pass that in the legislature. So, Barry's going to be helping craft a bill and hopefully seeing that through the process. And they believe that there's a good chance that it'll pass this year. So, we'll keep an eye on that. With that, that's all that I have for you, unless you have any questions or feedback, I'd be happy to take it.
Very good. It's a nice power tie, by the way. Any hard-hitting questions for Mr. Goodman, please? Wow.
And just to add on to what Tyler said about hands-free, it's got some great momentum. It's got, the cellphone companies are on board, the automobile associations are on board, pretty much everybody is sort of getting on board, according to Barry Aaron's and his folks. So, and Senator Brophy McGee's been very helpful in kind of leading that. Senator Phan can't do it because she's the Senate President, but she enlisted Senator Brophy McGee, so we've got a great ally there. So, we, this year, maybe, maybe we'll see it where, you know, we can, we can all drop our local ordinances and have one statewide hands-free law.
Senator Phan's been at this for how long?
Five years.
Five years?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, you're going to get off easy, Mr. Goodman.
his folks. So, so, and Senator Brophy McGee's been very helpful in kind of leading that. Senator Phan can't do it because she's the Senate President, but she enlisted Senator Brophy McGee. So we've got a great ally there. So we, this year, maybe, maybe we'll see it where, for, you know, we can, we can all drop our local ordinances and have one statewide hands-free law.
Senator Phan's been at this for how long?
Five years.
Five years? Yeah, yeah. All right, you're going to get off easy, Mr. Goodman. I've seen no other questions or comments from the council. Thank you, Tyler. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the 2019 legislative agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 9B, please.
Award a city contract to Earth Resources Corporation for the Drainage Improvements Project Bid Packet Number Two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Stewart, Public Works. Just so you know, throughout the year, we, Public Works takes many drainage complaints, and we research and track those. And we sift through and decide, determine basically which ones would warrant a public improvement like these here. And these three improvements we're looking at today for this project conclude all of our drainage issues brought to us in fiscal year 17. It's worth noting our criteria, what our criteria are for warranting a public improvement project like these. And that's basically if the stormwater leaves the right-of-way without any fault to the private property owner and damages their property. And with that, I will take any questions or...
Okay, questions or comments from the council? We did a great job presenting, apparently. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2019-147.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move on to item 9C, please.
Award a city contract to Capital Improvements LLC for the South Washington Avenue East Goodwin Street Improvement Project, an amendment of city contract with Shepherd-Westnitzer Incorporated for Post Design Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig Dotseth, Public Works. The item I bring before you today is the reconstruction of Washington Avenue and East Goodwin Streets, as we have up here on the, on the board. So on the, on the bottom of the screen would be the top of Washington Avenue up against Acker Park. And then it goes all the way down to Gurley Street, but not quite into Gurley Street. So we will not be impacting Gurley. It'll start just outside of it. Then on the west here starts at Mount Vernon, goes across to Penn Avenue is the boundaries of the project. The project includes replacement of the water and sewer systems, storm drain improvements, and full replacement of sidewalk, curb and gutter, and pavement surfaces. The recommended construction contract is with Capital Improvements LLC of Prescott and Post Design Services with Shepherd-Westnitzer Incorporated. The project design process included the most recent public meetings in April with 26 attendees and October with 41 attendees to receive suggestions and concerns from the neighboring areas. During the design process in 2018, the project received rightsizing review. And design changes would have decreased the overall project cost by about $1 million. The redesign or additional design items that were considered were also to reduce as many as possible impacts with the gas system in order to reduce impacts associated with relocation of the gas system. The project was competitively bid in November with three bids being submitted. And ultimately, with consideration of this contract and scheduled, the scheduled start of the project would be mid-January of 2019 and completion in October of 2019. With that, I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Councilman Blair?
Greg, can you kind of explain to all of the folks how old those lines are in Washington Avenue and Goodwin?
The water and sewer systems are dating back to pre-'40s in there. Waste water system is in dire need of the replacement as well as the, as the streets.
So the system's 70 to 80 years old, probably well overdue. Look forward to it. The only thing I want to make sure of is we're not going to adjust the height of the gutters?
No, it would be the same as what exists.
Good.
Okay, Councilman Good?
Craig, I want to commend you for getting another project ready to go. I know I've received a lot of comments about the volume of construction going out on throughout the city. And I know we've had a number of projects in the works for a number of years, in my opinion, over-engineered, taking way too long to design and then pull the trigger and get them built. So I commend you for getting these projects moving forward, started, completed. And hopefully, we can catch up and have our downtown core and the other surrounding areas upgraded and continuing to improve. So I ask for the public's patience as we work through this accelerating project start and completion. And in the long run, we're going to be very pleased with the results. So thank you and your team for that.
Okay, thank you. And definitely, I'm only one piece of the puzzle. We have an excellent team within Public Works, as well as our consulting community that supports us on these projects.
And thank you for rightsizing and not only getting the projects done, but getting them done really under the previous budget projections. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to say congratulations to that neighborhood because those folks have been waiting for quite a while to get this done. And I know they're happy about it. And we're happy for them. So thank you. It's another good Christmas present for them.
I believe we have a fan in the audience.
Yes, yes.
All right, Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. I appreciate, Greg, moving forward on some of these things. I also appreciate not forgetting that the street systems in the city of Prescott are part of our drainage system. So I agree with Blair. Let's just not go in there and mess with the sidewalks and the curbs and stuff. Let's take, do respect to what the communities evolved over the last 50, 60, 100 years before we just go down chopping down sidewalks and curbs and gutters and stuff like that.
Okay. And just to clarify, we are replacing the sidewalks and curb and gutter, but the elevation of the gutter will not be changing.
Well, thank you. And that was part of the issue we've, we've had to already endure once. And we don't want to go through it again. You know, there's a reason why it's at the elevation that it is. You know, water runs downhill. I want it in Connie's front yard, okay?
Any other questions, comments, public comment? Entertain a motion.
I'll do this one, Mayor. Let's move to approve city contract number 2019-150 and contract amendment 2016-00882.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 9D.
Approval of amendment to city contract to Phan Environmental for the production well rehabilitation program, design-build contract for production well number four.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay, Public Works. This next item before you is for the rehabilitation of Chino well number four. You may remember back in April, I came before you with amendment number two, and that was for the design of Chino well number four. Today, I'm happy to report that that design has been completed, and we are ready to move forward to construction with amendment number three. So I believe in the last presentation, I mentioned that Chino well number four was one of our most important wells. When in operation, it can produce us up to 3,300 gallons per minute of drinking water. So we're very excited to get this underway. Also, within the rehabilitation program, Chino well four, we're implementing a whole bunch of architectural details and mechanical equipment selections that were previously decided for Chino well number five of the program. And that's to develop consistency amongst our wells. So why am I mentioning architectural details, mechanical equipment selection in a council presentation? Well, it's because today I do have a present for you, a Christmas present, if you will. It's because we're Arizona's Christmas city, and I have that. So I would like to show you what you're approving really before it's constructed by showing you what we did at well number five. So this is the old well number five.
I can't wait.
It's a bit dark, but as you can see, it's kind of a standing seam roof, metal walls, rusted-out windows, deteriorating frames, some rusted piping. It was the first one that we tackled. It needed a little bit of love. On the inside, as you can see, as Mark zooms out a little bit, very cramped quarters, old equipment, everything is, it's tight. It's not, it's not a safe working environment. So it was something that we wanted to address with the project. Today, this is our current Chino well number five. The construction in this photograph is almost complete. The, the pump room, which is a removable room in case we need to access the pump, is yet to be installed with this. But in general, you can see it's a much more robust building, which is going to perform well for us into the future. Inside of that building, you can see we have all-new mechanical piping. The new flow-to-wasteline is there in the back, in the, the back left corner, you can see the, thank you, the new chlorine room, which is isolated from the mechanical piping room. And then the back right, you can see the entrance to the pump room. And then finally, no well rehabilitation is complete without a new pump and motor. So this is our new pump and motor in the pump room, which is, has now been installed since the last photograph was taken from the outside. So as you can see, our pump station, Chino well number five, is now a much more secure site, a much safer site if anybody were to try to tamper with it. We have much more reliable equipment in there. That equipment is being monitored and controlled with SCADA integration as well. There's room for our operators to work, and more importantly, room for our operators to work safely within that building. So there's, there's a lot of good things happening with the rehabilitation project in Chino. So back to this project, since it was part of an established rehabilitation program, there is funding available in the Water Fund. We have negotiated the GMP with our design-build contractor, which is Phan Environmental. We're very comfortable with Phan Environmental. They deliver a wonderful project every time that they touch one of our projects. So we are recommending award at this time. And if you have any questions, I will take them now.
All right, 3,300 gallons a minute.
It's our highest-producing well.
It's pretty good volume. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, we'll entertain a motion then.
Mayor? Go ahead.
I move to adopt number A3 to city contract number 2017-024 to Phan Environmental for the production of well rehabilitation program, design-build contract for production well number four in the amount of $2,087,839.77.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 9E, please.
Item one is adopt resolution number 2018-1667, authorizing the city of Prescott to enter into a pre-annexation development agreement with Third Gen Enterprises LLC. Item number two is to adopt ordinance 2018-1642, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Prescott by annexing approximately 90.5 acres of residential rural zone land, RCU-2A, generally located east of Corsair Avenue and north of Center Force Drive in Yavapai County, Arizona, into the city of Prescott and assigning a zoning classification there, too. Item three is adopt ordinance number 2018-1643, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott, generally located near the intersection of Corsair Avenue and Center Force Drive from rural estate two-acre RE-2 zoning district to industrial general IG zoning district. Item four is to approve a preliminary plat. Item five, approve city contract. And number six is to approve the lease and sale.
Good work, Maureen. Malful there.
Good afternoon. Katie Peterson with Community Development Department. So this is the proposed annexation and associated actions for the joint annexation application by Liberator, known as Third Gen, as well as city of Prescott. This is, again, the annexation, rezoning, development agreement, which includes the lease, sale, the water service, and then separately but related is the preliminary plat application and request. I'll go over each of those quickly, as well as the preliminary plat, and then we can answer questions if there are any. The site is east of Corsair, within the red boundaries here that you see. So on the western side is the current, the lot that's currently owned by Third Gen. On the east there is the city of Prescott-owned site. It's hard to see there. The plat of annexation also shows that entire site with the boundaries. You can see there, the lot line boundaries. This, currently, the general plan land use designation is industrial on that western portion of the site. On the eastern and north portion, it's designated recreation and open space. So the proposed rezone is for that western portion currently owned by Third Gen and the western part of the city-owned site within this blue circle that you see. As it's annexed in, it would be along with the equivalent county zoning. The equivalent county zoning is residential rural, RCU-2A. So the associated city zoning that it would be annexed in, as is the rural estate two-acre RE2 for the initial rezone. So that's automatic with the annexation. After that, what they're proposing is a rezone from that initial city zoning, RE2, to industrial general IG. That would allow the, the site for use as the contractor's storage yard. And the proposory zone is consistent. The IG zone that's proposed is consistent with the 2015 Prescott general plan. There are more details in the staff report. The west portion designated as industrial would be the proposed contractor's storage yard. The southeast and east portion that's designated as recreation open space would be the western corner used for the contractor's storage yard. The remainder of the lot in the creek bed would remain undeveloped. And this map shows effective upon annexation, rezoning, the adoptive, with adoption and effective dates is where you see that green line is approximately where the Corsair is aligned. So access to the site would be from Liberator Drive and Center Force. City of Prescott site you see there, to the north and east, the current site that's owned by city of Prescott with Third Gen, the currently-owned site is, is the portion in red. Concurrently, separately but concurrently would be the preliminary plat that they've proposed. So in the staff report, you can see a little bit more closely, but the preliminary plat would result in 13, 13 lots. And with that preliminary plat, relevant required standards have been met with what they've proposed. Additional details are usually reviewed upon submittal of building permits. So the staff report includes some details about the compliance with the Land Development Code and the required standards. So as part of that, there is the development agreement to be addressed here today. That provides relevant details, including responsibility for payment of insulation costs, water supply, other requirements. And today, the recommended actions, separate but related, there are six, total of six actions. actions. The city contracts for, the lease-sale contract to water services are both part of the development agreement, and then separately, there's the annexation, the rezone, and then the preliminary That's all.
Great job, Katie. Thank you. So, questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Mayor, I just had one concern about this. This is the second real estate lease purchase agreement that the council has been asked to approve, just in the last couple of months. As we noted, under the last situation like this with the Hilton Garden Inn, our city charter doesn't specifically address lease-purchase real estate contracts. It's clear that under a sale, when we're distributing or selling off taxpayer assets, we need to publicly bid that and make sure that the taxpayers understand we're getting the maximum dollar for those assets. City Charter also allows the city manager to lease city assets when we're not disposing of them to the best interest of the city. But, an agreement like this, where we're leasing and then we're offering a purchase option, is not specifically addressed. So, I wanted to make sure that the taxpayers are getting a reasonable return on their assets, so I asked how the purchase price was determined. So, recently, in 2014, I don't know, Don is not here, but I asked Don Hirsch, our real estate specialist in the city, to tell me how we came up with that number. So, we were looking at acquiring that property, and when you look at the property, it's a challenging bit of property. It's got some drainage in there, it's a very awkward shape.
Next to the sewer treatment plant.
That's right. We had a odor easement that we had to acquire, right, which isn't too common. But, at the time, it was appraised at 17,500 per acre, and we're using that same number to determine the value of this purchase option. So, I think that it's reasonable to say that that value is still the same, and we're, yeah, and we're getting that, yeah.
The plant wasn't there when we acquired the property.
Right. So, in essence, we retain that odor easement at a net zero cost, and we're still getting the same value from this purchase. So, I just want the public to know that the value, I think, is reasonable, and we're getting a good dollar amount for it. And I think next year, early next year, we're probably going to be looking at the city charter to kind of address this issue, so it's not, it doesn't become a concern for the public in the future. Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments from the council? So, we will entertain motions separately.
So, Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2018-1667.
Second. Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1642.
Second. We have a motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1643.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, move to approve preliminary plat, PLN 18-022.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Move to approve city contract number 2019-102, WSA 18-013.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
And finally, move to approve lease and sale of city contract number 2019-152.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Well, we want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we're going to end with a quote from George W. Bush. No, George W. Bush, you know, we recently lost George H.W., and this is a quote from the funeral service from his son. "Your decency, sincerity, and kind soul will stay with us forever. So, through our tears, let us know the blessings of knowing and loving you, a great and noble man, the best father a son or daughter could have." This meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah.